Worked in the cafeteria at Discovery School and had worked in our school system for many, many years, passed away just, was it last night? Okay. Want to remember her and her family. I also want to remember certainly those students and families in Kentucky as a result of a massive school shooting today. But before that, we will have our pledge led by Ahmaud Johnson, a sixth grade student from Bradley, and also Jade Watson, a third grade student from Kason Lane.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now I'm on with flowers. All right, ladies and gentlemen of the board, you have in front of you the copy of the agenda that you've had. I'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda, if would please.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Have a second.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Renee. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you very much. All right, communications. Dr. Gilbert?
Yes, Ms. Trail.
Good afternoon. I'm actually going to yield the floor real quick to Mr. Raph Ringstaff to introduce all of our special guests tonight.
I need that. In Murfreesboro City Schools, we have a very, very popular basketball league. We've done this for a long before I arrived, but it has grown over the years. We use high school referees, officials. We have a season ending tournament, and the gyms are always packed. Many gyms, we have, after the girls' game, we have to usher the girls' fans out and allow the boys' fans into the gym. That's why we make our gyms a lot larger now than when we built a new school. But it is so popular that we have concessions. They grill hamburgers, hot dogs, and the whole nine yards. People come and have great meals. We had a more equal league this year, and on any given night, one school could beat the other school. It was very even. But in the end, of course, you always have teams who win the regular season and then the teams that win a tournament, the citywide tournament. This year, I'm going first to introduce Scales. Coach Alexander, you going to come on up? Come on up. They went through the regular season undefeated.
All right.
And also won the season ending tournament. I'm going to let Coach Alexander say a little bit about the season and then introduce his players.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank you for allowing us to have our season. It means a lot to not only our players, but also to our school community. At this time, I'd like to recognize our players. Ladies, if you would stand up, so I know who all is here tonight, and I will call you up. Aiden, will you come on up real quick? Isabella, Lyric, Maritza, Robin, Morgan, Aslan, Kalen, Isabel, Kirsten, Taylor, and a little bit, come here. And should not forget our assistant coach, who has done a great job helping us over the last few years, Coach Gibson. Ladies, this is for you. Again, we would like to thank you for everything that you have done to allow us to have the seasons that we've had over the few, last few years. I'll turn the floor back over to you, and we really appreciate it.
Congratulations.
And may I say that Mr. Alexander was one of my graduate students when I taught at MTSU. Just saying.
Wow. I had one that just walked in, Serenity. She's right here in the back. She just walked in.
Serenity. Coach Mitchell, you going to walk on up, please? While Coach is walking up, Bradley Academy, boys, also went undefeated during the regular season and also won the season ending tournament. Congratulations, Coach.
I got doing good evening. Like I said, like he can, I can just piggyback off what Coach said. Thank y'all for allowing us to have this season. It's a truly an inspiration for all these kids that are involved in this program and the school system. I'm going to start introducing my guys. Y'all guys can stand up. Go ahead and stand up. And as I call their name out, you just come to the front. Edwin Fabia, come down. Jalen Morgan. Kivante Porter, Zion Herbert, Isaiah Verge, Michael Henderson, Jordan Massing, Zakai Merible, Deonte King Tibbs, and Ahmaud Johnson. These guys had, did a great job this year. And I'm, like I said, I want to thank y'all guys for allowing us to be a big inspiration for these young men right here, standing before you.
Job well done. Thank you very much. Ms. Lisa?
Okay. Since we're talking basketball, I do want to just point out that Coach Turnbow is with us tonight through leadership at Rutherford, and want to go ahead and point him out and thank him and his team for allowing us to go to MTSU every year and to bring this cheering crowd to you guys. So thank you. Okay, so in other events, in other news.
Can I add something to say to Mr. Ringstaff?
Well, sure.
You have done a beautiful job with that basketball league, and it is, it is rowdy, it is fun, but the kids had great sportsmanship, which was led by their coaches. It was inspired by their coaches. And we have so many coaches that work for our system, and we have so many volunteer coaches that come out and help our kids. And I really appreciate that. And I appreciate your side gig with helping put together the basketball season.
Well, thank you. I've been a high school coach my whole life, and I said, okay, an elementary school league, this is going to be a piece of cake. Oh, my goodness. They take it serious. We're very fortunate to, now, the police department has, and I want to thank them because Sergeant Walker, he's done a great job. They provide an S R, S R, oh, excuse me, a police officer at every basketball game now. And we had, I think, four or five at the basketball tournament. So we're very thankful for that partnership. And yes, this basketball league has grown. Thank you very much.
Okay, let me get on to our thank yous now. So we'd like to thank the following individuals and community partners for their generosity during our 2017 season of sharing. This year, we were able to assist approximately 1,200 children and families with their holiday needs. This is led by Mr. Greg Lyles and his team and our social workers, as well as our guidance counselors. Those who really made a big difference in it were General Mills, Parks Realty, North Boulevard Church of Christ, their youth group, and also the Band of Brothers, Murfreesboro City Schools Instruction Department and Food Services Association, Bethel United Methodist Church Toy Store, Murfreesboro Police Department, and Amy Reason. In addition to that, our maintenance department really helped us tremendously in getting everything moved around. And Hobgood School gave up their gymnasium for us for quite a while while we worked on the distribution of that. So we're very proud that we were able to serve that many children and families. Also, congratulations to Dr. Stacy Burt, who will be working with Netflix and Scholastics to create 13 episodes of The Magic School Bus. So that's pretty exciting. Yeah. So way to go, Dr. Burt. Congratulations to Scales Elementary. The Tennessee Behavioral Support Project from Vanderbilt has asked Scales to submit a video created by Ryan Stewart and the RTI 2B, sorry, my tongue there, the RTI 2B team. There's, it's going to be to the associate, to the association, a positive behavioral support film festival that will be held in San Diego this March. So we are going to a film festival. Pretty impressive. Also, I want to make sure that we remind everyone that Mitchell Nielsen will be, will be offering the College Bound Family Night. That is this Thursday night, January 25th. That's open to any Murfreesboro City School parent or sibling who is interested in earning their GED or going back to college. It's a really great one-on-one type atmosphere, so you can ask those questions that maybe you wouldn't feel comfortable going back and asking at a, you know, at a bigger setting. So again, that is this Thursday night, January 25th. It's from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Mitchell Nielsen. We also want to invite the community to Patterson Park this Thursday night for the 2018 African-American Cultural Celebration. This year's theme is African-American Roots: A Century of Black Life, History, and Culture. The event is free and will be held from 4:00 until 7:15. I think the student performances begin around 6:00. With those announcements, I also want to take this opportunity to wish you a happy School Board Week. It is National School Board Week. And if I can call on Mr. Bill Shacklet to join me.
Thank you, Lisa. Well, this group in front of me is always saying thank you and appreciating all of the young people, the teachers, the staff, all of the folks in this system that do such a wonderful job on a daily basis of not only educating our children, but teaching them to love learning. And the people in front of you help guide that ship. I had served, the last time I was on city council, I served with the school board and so enjoyed that, but was grateful to come back on this, to serve as the council's liaison. And the most, so impressive to see this group work together. And, you know, you sit on the sidelines, like, we're not expected to say a whole lot, and that's probably a good thing. But to watch them work together, they are so conscientious about the job and the role that they play for you. Each of them bring a different experience and background to the role that they're playing, but they are involved in decision-making. They ask questions of staff. They don't just take things for granted, but they work extremely hard. And to have an opportunity to see that from the inside again, it's been quite rewarding for me. And to give us a little recognition from our mayor and from our city council, let me read this proclamation for you. Whereas, "An excellent public education system is vital to the quality of life of Tennessee's communities and to the economic development of the state." And whereas, "School Board members represent a tremendous resource as local decision-makers and diligently work to overcome the challenges of a challenging world while providing students with the services and opportunities needed for a quality education." And whereas, "School Board members strive to ensure that every student graduates high school prepared for college and the workplace." And whereas, "School Board members recognize the importance of improvement and progress in education and accept the responsibilities involved in implementing those initiatives." And whereas, "The men and women of our local school boards are elected by the people to make decisions most appropriate for their communities and deserve recognition and thanks for their countless hours of service to public education in Tennessee." Now, therefore, I, Shane McFarland, Mayor of the City of Murfreesboro, hereby proclaim the week of January 21st through the 27th, 2018, to be School Board Appreciation Week and urge all citizens to join us in recognizing the dedication and hard work of our local school board members in preparing today's students for tomorrow's world. Butch, would you come down and receive this for me? On behalf of the mayor and the council, but on behalf of me, thank you for what you do. And not just what you do, but the way you go about doing it.
Thank you very much. Let me just say, I think I accept this on behalf of all of our school board members, all seven of us. And Bill, we certainly appreciate your comments, and we appreciate the leadership that you give to us, along with the rest of the staff of Murfreesboro City Schools, the school system, and everybody involved. Thank you very much.
Audience, would you please join me in thanking the school board?
And Mr. Campbell, those are your communications for tonight, unless you have any other questions.
Anybody have a question or comment from Ms. Trail or anyone? I want to say thank you to those of you that are here tonight, and I know you've got other things to do. But I also recognize, and I think we all do, that athletics is an important part of young people growing up, and not only in the athletic skills, but also the other skills that they learn through participating in athletics as well. Thank you very much. Okay, consent items. Are there any questions on the consent items before we approve these? I got a couple. On school fees, just because I don't know, all right? The competition that our cheerleaders are attending?
Actually, that one did not happen. And I want to recognize while we're at it. Amber Kelly, would you stand up? Amber is one of our coaches of our cheerleading team. And so, well, I know that you didn't know that this was on here. But they, they wound up not being able to go to Centennial.
I'm sorry. It would have been another first-place trophy, I'm sure.
Yeah.
But they are going to Nationals, so.
And they are good. Really, really good.
Now, will you please tell me what Jump Street is?
I can tell you what that is.
It's heaven.
Okay.
Well, okay. I can tell you all about.
What is it, Jade?
It's a bunch of mats, and they can jump around, and balls. Yeah, my girls love it.
Where, where is Jump Street located?
You know where Outback is?
Farmer's Restaurant.
Oh, where the, yeah, I know where you're talking about now. Okay.
Farmers, yeah, Farmer. Old Navy used to be.
Okay.
Next to where I should be exercising.
Okay. All right. Any, yes, ma'am?
I just have a question slash comment about one of them that's listed at a fee of $21. That's kind of out, okay, good. Kind of out of the norm.
This is to the Country Music Hall of Fame and to Studio B. And the students from the sixth grade, in fifth grade, they got to go to the Country Music Hall of Fame, but it was an abbreviated trip. And so they voted within the class to go to Country Music Hall of Fame and Studio B. But because this school only has one sixth grade, they have to pay for the bus.
Oh, yes.
So the bus fee is like $11. The Studio B fee is five. And, and if there are any children that need assistance, they are taking care of that situation.
Well, I just, it just seemed out of line with everything, especially when we've gone to Country Music Hall of Fame before. But I didn't think about just one class. That really ups the, the cost. Thank you, Collier.
Okay. Policy 3.201. We talked about last time in, on line 19, when we were talking about the safety part and letting somebody know. Do we need to change that principal designate? Or do you think it's okay as principal? I'm just thinking, in case the principal is not there.
I think that would be a good addition. The designate, yes.
That could be the assistant principal, right?
Yes, or it would be anyone that would be in administrative position that, that particular day. It's rare when we have both out, but sometimes we do.
Okay. So it would be permissible with the board to add designate to that? Okay. So when we vote, we want to make sure we remember that.
Good catch.
And then on 302, I'm sorry, 3202. Do we, in regards to our fire extinguishers, do we have a company that comes in and checks those every year? I'm assuming?
Every month.
Every month. Okay. All right. Good. All right. Okay. Any other questions on anything in the consent items? Mr. Ballard?
Just to follow up what you're, you're asking there, I know we took time and went through these on the first reading. The second reading, I didn't, I just assumed that all of those things would be taken care of that we talked about. Is that safe to say that there were a few inputs that?
I think the only thing that wouldn't be there that I am aware of is the designate.
Okay, because I was sure we were ready to confirm these, but I just wanted to ask that question. Okay.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Suddles. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Action items?
Your first action item is the approval of tenured teachers, and I'm going to bring Mr. Ringstaff up again.
I get this privilege also. This is fun. Let me explain the tenure law. In 2011, they changed the tenure law to where a teacher had to work in a system at least five years before they were eligible for tenure. And the last two years, they had to receive a four or a five, which means above expectations are significantly above expectations. Not just meets expectations, they have to be above expectations. Now, if they've got a four or a five on their fourth year, in their fourth year, and got a three in their fifth year, they had to start over. They had to go two consecutive years with a four or a five. So it's a lot harder to get tenure nowadays than it was in the past. In the past three years, if you did a halfway good job, you got tenure. And I'm, I'm one of those that did a halfway good job. So I know. I know from experience. But these 47 teachers and three principals met the requirements of the new tenure law for the last five years. The last two years, at least the last two years, they have been above expectations or significantly above expectations. So I want to compliment them early, first before I butcher all their names. But they did a job well done. And please give them a round of applause first. So when I call your name, please stand. I'm not going to make you stand the whole time. You stand, well, actually, you may. If you can stand, I appreciate it. We'll go first Alicia Shea from Irma Segal. Okay. Amanda Adams from Bradley. Amber Kelly from Scales. Amy Martin from John Pittard. Andrea Pierce from Scales. Angela Pope from Irma Segal. Ann Shaw from Irma Segal. Anna Buckles from Kason Lane. Ashley Barnes from Hobgood. Ashley Harold from Mitchell Nielsen. Bethany Jackson from John Pittard. Brenda Melanda from Hobgood. Buffy Brazier from Overall Creek. Casey Anderson from Irma Segal. Catherine LeFieu from Hobgood. Cody Young from Northfield. Emily Ford from Irma Segal. Emmy Spencer from Irma Segal. Holly Troglan from Scales. Jackie Hamilton from Irma Segal. Jennifer Newsom from Discovery. Jessica Hickson from Scales. Jill Taylor from Irma Segal. Joy Shepherd from Overall Creek. Judy Hines from Hobgood. Karen Tyson, excuse me, Karen Tyson from Discovery. Katie Wright Davis from Mitchell Nielsen. Katie Nanny from Overall Creek. Kimberly Christopher from Scales. Kimberly Osborne from Reese Rogers. Lori Offit from Central Office. Lisa Bowie from Scales. Lisa Wright from Black Fox. Liz Ruby from Scales. Lori France from Irma Segal. Mallory Eaton from Overall Creek. Maria Johnson from Scales. Matthew Clarity from Mitchell Nelson. Owen Davis from Irma Segal. Rachel Prater from Mitchell Nelson. Rebecca Hoggett from Northfield. Salome Mateino from Hobgood. Sandra Daniel from John Pittard. Sarah Martin from Mitchell Nelson. Sarah Chumney from Kason Lane. Sandra Smith from Scales. Spring Harris from John Pittard. Tammy Key from Mitchell Nelson. Tracy West from Hobgood. Whitney Wilson from John Pittard. These are your teachers and principals and central office staff who've gained tenure. These are your teachers and principals and central office staff who've gained tenure. Congratulations.
How many did you say it was? Forty-five?
Forty-seven teachers.
Fantastic.
Wow.
That's the biggest group I think we've had since I've been on the board. Congratulations, everybody.
We did a motion to approve
So moved.
Ringstaff's recommendation. So I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Ms. Renear, have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. King. Any questions, comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And certainly there is none. Thank you very much, Ms. Ringstaff. And thank all of you. I know it's, well, I guess Ralph, it was easier for you and I to get tenure once. All right. Approval of the school calendar?
Yeah, you have your calendar before you. A couple of changes this year. We have had half-days in the past. We're moving to full days after talking with teachers and principals, really felt that that was more beneficial as far as professional development. Thank you, teachers. Yeah, you've got to go change the world again tomorrow. Go home.
Get some rest.
Our tenure is over.
Their tenure, we're out of here.
Get out of here. Tell you what, there are some fantastic teachers on this. It's pretty amazing. And we continue to get good teachers. We interviewed some this past week and they're coming aboard and they're going to be great. But anyway, your academic calendar is before you. We do have the three days that we are taking out of our snow, snow stockpile days and putting them in the calendar and you'll see those. Those are the ones with the little X's. We do have 180 student days minus the three days for the snow days. You do have five administrative days. You have five in-service days that we have tabbed to have by law. The fifth administrative days will be, will be earned by principal approval. And then, we have the two in-service days that are also teachers earn on their own. So we found those to be really effective in the past. We do have the two parent-teacher days that are on there. We are ending winter break with a full day. We are not taking the half-day after that. That day tends to be just wasted and it really hurts us on attendance. So Rutherford County will be having their abbreviated day the day after, but we will be getting out on, on the 19th of December.
All right, question, Ms. Smith?
I have about five or six.
Okay, go ahead. We're good.
So, first one, let's begin at the beginning.
Okay.
Why do we have to start so soon?
Well, because we have 180 days to get in before Memorial Day. And that's, that's really the only way we can do it. The only way we would not do that is if we take the two days of parent-teacher conference and put them back in where teachers were running those after school. And we found that that just, having the two days during the day is much more productive.
Okay, that's sad. That adds to another. So
Okay.
Would Election Day, now that you can go vote wherever you want to, come into play for any of these workdays or having the parent-teacher conferences on the Election Day? Would that fit calendar-wise?
I think with the concerns that are there for security with the fact that Rutherford County is out on that Election Day, I think it would be really fruitless for us to be in school on that day. And I think that the consensus of, certainly, I think the principals and the teachers would be the concern for the children being in school on the day. It just, it's almost impossible to have school. Now, would I like for them to have election at places other than in schools? Yes. But I think that's not going to happen.
But you don't think that you could have parent-teacher conferences on that day?
Well, where it falls, I don't think it would be, the timing of it would be tough because when you look at that, you're looking at Election Day, well, where are they?
November 6.
Yeah, I think, I think really the, the November day, the November 1st day works really well. I, I think it would be difficult to have parent-teacher conferences. I think anytime that you have children, because we do have student-day conferences, I think it would be tough to have them on that election, on that Election Day. The teachers really like the November 1st. It pushes it closer to where, if you look, if you look on the back with the report cards, the report card period is ending October 15th. That would push it a week later. I would prefer to leave it on the, on the 1st if we could.
I mean, it just, it's only three days after.
Right.
Something to consider. Lots of talk, so did you talk to Rutherford County Schools? I actually think what you've done in making the teacher workdays a full day versus the half-day is the right thing? Did you talk to Rutherford County to see if they do the right thing?
I talked to Rutherford County a few years ago about changing the day of their half-days. At that time, we weren't looking at changing the half-days. I did have that discussion with them. They were concerned about attendance. I did not talk with them. They already had their calendar made and so I did not, I did not talk with them about changing their half-days to a full day. If they did that, they would have, they would probably have to change some other days in their calendar, so I'm not sure. Now that Ms. Smith said that they would want to do that, I can certainly share with Mr. Odom what we're doing.
Well, because in talking to people that, you know, some people in our system have children in Rutherford County, some people work for Rutherford County, you know, that we have, we're so intertwined.
Right.
So, that being a factor, it'd be nice for that to be consistent. But then also, we come to that, I've heard from a number of working families that their older children take care of the children that, maybe that's being confirmed by others, take care of the younger children that are in Murphy's Sporacity Schools and that will be a problem, you know, on those days that they're not in school. So, that, that has been an issue. And then the other thought was, if you're going to take a full day, did, did, and we are, since we are doing the right thing by doing the full day, because I actually think that our kids get a lot out of the half-day, but maybe the, the older kids may not. But the, is to make that a Friday? Is to make the one day a Friday? Is that something you considered?
Well
And I don't even know if that's the right thing.
And I'll consider anything. The reason, the reason they're there the way they are is because those are Rutherford County's half-days. And I think if we were to have a, a full day and especially if we were to follow their half-day, I'm afraid that we would have students that, that really, I just, I don't think the attendance would be that good. What I try to do is to match up our full days with their half-days.
Oh, right, I totally understand. And I, and I, you know, it's, we've got half of their half-days now because we're doing the full days, correct?
We're, we're going the full days when they're going the half-days. Now, there's
But some of the days, they have half-days now that we are in school.
On, right, so that happens, well, where does that happen? That happens January 31st and, let me see if there's another one. Jan, and November 15th. Right, on those two days. I would, I think, well We can, we can look at that. My concern, and I would have to take some time to think through that, but my concern would be whether we would have attendance or how good our attendance, any, any time that, that they are going to be out for the half-day, I think it's going to hurt us some with attendance. I think if we were to say we were going to follow, for example, if we had, well, we would have to be out on, if we move, for example, on November 6th date for an in-service day on the 16th, then probably, I, I would have to look at the number of days that we would be in, but I would be concerned about the attendance then on that Thursday if Rutherford were going to be out a half-day and then we were going to follow up on Friday with being out ourselves. And that's just off-the-cuff thinking after a long day at work, but that would, that would be my concern with having it on that Friday. I know that is the concern that Rutherford County had because I talked with them about moving theirs to Friday a couple of years ago. And they, they did not feel they wanted to do that because of attendance.
And then, I know this wouldn't happen, but in talking to people, there was a mention that maybe we would have some parents, some teacher parents that might not come on a Friday. I know that you put all this into, into thought when you were coming up with the calendar. I know that. I just
Yeah, we, we ran this before all of our principals, also MEAs, E-Board, and then some additional teachers too. And I didn't hear, there, there was a question from them about starting on Friday and that's why I put a workday that day instead of like the district in-service day, because I really wanted to give our teachers two full workdays before we had meeting the students on the half-day. And I felt like that that work-based day on Friday would be a little easier than having this district in-service, for example, on that Friday. That was really the only question that I think I had from, from the folks that looked at this.
And I think the Christmas break length is fantastic.
Good.
And not, and not having that half-day just ending after the full days. Great.
One of the things for the audience to know, and I know the board knows this, but one of the things, one of the ways we'll be graded is by our attendance. And so that's really becoming into play and a lot of superintendents are even looking at snow days and if there's any chance that they're going to have a high rate of absenteeism, they're, they're just calling off school, which I think makes it tough on parents, but I can understand where the superintendent's coming from because that, that attendance piece is becoming increasingly important.
Ms. Renear?
Can I just ask you a question?
Sure.
Just with all the illness that we had prior to Christmas, not us necessarily, but other cities around us, and days were called or they, you know, did not attend school a couple of days, and then all this bad weather, do you suppose when they're close to their snow days being used up? I think, a friend of mine said, I think they only have two days left. I think she's in Cannon County?
I think there are probably several.
So, do you suppose that if we get another streak like that and, and when I taught in Indiana a million years ago, if we had bad weather, which of course up there, everything, they're ready for that weather, but if we had bad weather like that, they would eventually say, you're not going to have, you're not going to have to make up these days if you end up in, let's say, 16, 17 days. That'd be really difficult.
I've heard some discussion of that. I know that that did happen. I believe the last year that the previous commissioner was in, I believe that happened. And I can't remember now whether it was snow or, I think it was probably snow, but there were several counties that were right there. And so, he did give a waiver for that. They had to write about that. I have not, I would imagine that will become a discussion if we have another bout of, of snow. And frankly, I think there are going to be districts and I know that we are not over our flu, certainly. But I know there are already some rumblings among some superintendents about whether, that they are concerned about the number of the, of the days they're reaching, but I have not heard anything from the state about considering that yet.
And they are being so proactive in little comments on TV, little commercials, that if you're sick, stay home. So I think that parents will adhere to that and that will affect attendance. But I think that the state needs to realize that that's what's happening and that's therefore what's going on. We don't want any more children to get deathly.
Right, right.
So, and I do want to make one more comment if I may. Since we're talking about bad weather, just to commend you on how you've handled making the call early enough that families know the day that ESP was not going to meet, that was called early enough so families knew and could decide what they had to do the next day. So I think you did a great job.
Well, I think I was just lucky that it hit when it hit, is what I think, but, but thank you very much.
You don't know and you think, well, if all this is coming, we got, we got kind of snookered one time, didn't we?
We did. It's, it's hard.
I'd say you called it better than the state of Tennessee did.
Oh, well, thank you. I consider that a somewhat high compliment.
It is a high compliment. The state of Tennessee called Friday, but they didn't call Monday.
Oh.
Mr. Ballard?
Thank you, sir. As I go through this, again, last year I had a little bit of a, I was processing this because it looks to me as I, and I put the pencil to it this time, and, and if you just take classroom days, okay, it seems, there's not a month when we have fulfilled every classroom day during that month. And some days it's as low, some months, well, you take December, it's as low as, 12 classroom days are used in the month of December. So I, I have a concern about the, the amount of classroom time in that. So, and, and I take it that it works. I have to assume that it works because I don't get any discussion between the board and I don't get any discussion from, and parents out there, if you have a problem with this, please give me a call or send me some email. I have heard from zero about a problem with the calendar. So it must work and so, but I still have in me, I have a concern about the number of days that are just not used.
Right.
And, and I know we've got to drill down on, on some improvements in academics and it one, it makes me wonder, you know, you know, I used to work for a guy that said there's 24 hours in the day, you know, when you said you had trouble getting something done, you, you know, but not to use that analogy exactly, but if, in like the, the days that we have just lost, we've lost six days in a, in a row, counting Martin Luther King Day, but we lost six days in a row. And how are we going to make that up? Theoretically, we work harder, theoretically we do so, but do we really have a device, a mechanism to make that up? So, and the last thing about that, and I'll let you comment, because the last thing about it is August bothers me in that, and I know we have no way out maybe, but it just seems so inefficient to fire up the school and fire up the buses and, and run it through the hottest month of the year and keep those places cooled down for days that we're not even going to be in there. And so, if there was some, if we just, if we put our green hats on, what could we do to, to, you know, somehow get out of the month of August and move toward, you know, closer to the September dates for some of these opportunities to consolidate? If there are any opportunities. The only thing else I'll throw out there is I see that we're taking a Easter holiday, Good Friday, which is on the 19th, but that follows a week, March 25 through 29, where we're taking five days for a spring break. And then we turn around and we're taking Good Friday. Why not move that spring break into the Good Friday week?
Okay, let, let me, let me just go through the, the calendar if I could, and I think it's important to do that for the audience too. As far as the number of days, as I've said, we have 180 school days that we are required, we are required to get in. We can take some of our stockpile days, and we do have 13 stockpile days. We can take some of those for professional development. We can take some of those, obviously, for weather. We can take some of those for, for illness, but we have 180 days that we have to get in. So it really is trying to decide how many of those stockpile days are useful knowing that to take, knowing that we are taking student instruction days. So the way the calendar is constructed is with us being so close to Rutherford County too, trying to match up for parents to have the breaks at the same time. Now, if we start in, in September, we could certainly do that, but then we have to make a choice of giving up both our fall break, our spring break, and then adding two weeks on probably in June. So that's the reason that school districts have not done that. Also, when you do that, another reason school districts are starting when they're starting is because you do have testing. So while we may be looking at, we don't want to go into the second, the third week of June and we don't want to give up fall break and spring break, educationally, we also have to understand that where those tests are going to hit in April. And so if you're not starting until September, then you've, you've cut out a month of instruction. So that's kind of what you'll hear the discussion about at the state level because every year there is some discussion, particularly from people who come into the area and they're used to starting school after Labor Day. But then when you start looking at, all right, where do we get those 180 days? It becomes really hard. And, and that was this year too, it was a little difficult. So, what you have at the very beginning of this calendar, we have a two-day learning extravaganza that's totally optional, but I went ahead and listed it on the calendar for our teachers and also for any teachers. for our teachers and also for any teachers that are thinking about coming to Murfreesboro City, so they would see that. So it will be listed as optional because it is. Teachers can come to an hour, they can come to two days, they don't have to come at all, but they can get their in-service points. That is a way to do that, and also those two days are days which, in which our teachers actually do the teaching. And so last year it was really neat because I had a lot of teachers, I did the schedule, I've done the schedule the last two years. I won't do it this year, Joe will, but I had teachers who actually wrote me in the spring and said, I'm thinking about doing this, what do you think? And absolutely, so it really is where our teachers can step forward and be leaders. So we will have that again this year, and that will be two optional days on Wednesday and Thursday, the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth of July. We are starting with a school-based work day on July the twenty-seventh, where this is when the teachers can work in their rooms, and then our district in-service will not be until July the thirty-first, which is on Monday. We will follow that with a school-based work day again, and then our students will come in for a true half day, and this will be for grades one through six on August the first. Now that is the day when Rutherford County is going to start their administrative days, and then they have their in-service day on the day of our school-based in-service, which will be August the second. So we have two school-based in-service days, two school-based in-service days that will be August the second, August the third, and we will have two work days that will be school-based, and also a district in-service before school actually starts on the full day, which will be on Monday, the August the sixth, which will also be Rutherford County's, that will be their abbreviated day. And then we will be in school then, full days, until we get to September, the third, which is Labor Day, which is a holiday, and then our other day that we would be out in September will be a half day of Rutherford County, which would be a full day for us on September the thirteenth. Again, that being set, Rutherford County already having their day set, and, and looking at the calendar, are trying to match up a day that would make sense for us not to have a great impediment of, of our students' absences, and also would give us time for training. Typically, we need after the state decides really whatever their new initiatives are going to be, and we get the teachers with their, their students in the classroom and get settled down, and we're starting to begin to get hopefully this year test scores back. That September day becomes really productive for our teachers because until then you're kind of guessing what you need to have, and, and by that time, everybody is in a routine, and they can really, really have some really meat as far as professional development. So that day is September the thirteenth. The next break that we have would be the fall break that matches Rutherford County, and that will run starting, our last day, well, our day will be October the first through October the fifth. Then in November, we have Parent Teacher Conference Day on November, November the first, and what I hear from teachers is they really like that day during the year. They're much more refreshed, and we really do allow flexing that day. What, what I ask the principals is figure out what hours most of your teachers, most of your parents can come. So in some schools, you may have teachers that are coming at different times, and you may have the principal there, maybe starting in the morning, the assistant principal in the afternoon, but that's totally up to them. So I do ask that they let their teachers know early enough what kind of hours, and have that discussion hopefully with their teachers deciding on the hours of that day. But that is, the Parent Teacher Conference Day would be November first, and then we have an, an election day, which is state and federal, and Rutherford County is out on that day, and that's November sixth, and we are picking up, feel like that that would be a good day for our teachers to have in-service, so that that would stop us from having to have a day off on November the fifteenth. That November sixth day, again, you have from September until November. November, we for sure will have our test scores in, and it's a good day for us to really come together and see, okay, for this specific year, where we are now with, with our instruction, what do we need to do? So that is the reason that November sixth day is there. That day, and also the in-service day on the, on, in September will be made up through our, our snow days. Then we have Thanksgiving break, which matches with Rutherford County at the end of November, and then our last day will be December nineteenth. That will be a full day from, for everyone. We are not, we feel like that the two hours and the half day after that really become wasted, particularly since our hours do differ from the county hours on that day, particularly for their high school students, and so it makes sense for us to just end with a full day there on December the nineteenth. Then in January, Rutherford County comes back in with an in-service day, and we also will come in with an in-service day on the seventh of January. This will be a good day for learning, but also a good day for us to prepare for our students to be coming in on January the eighth, which is the same day that Rutherford County students return. Martin Luther King Jr. being a holiday on January the twenty-first, Rutherford County is out on January the thirty-first. We are not out that day. We don't feel we need that day out. February, we have a holiday with President's Day, which is acknowledged, and it's a day out for the county and also the city. When you get into March, our second in-service day, and we are having it early in March because we feel like, it used to be hell late in the year, but really if you want to change, if there's something that needs to happen as far as the students, working with the parents, letting the parents know early enough in the year that, that here's where we're going. We need some help here, or everything's fine, but by having it in March, that gives another additional two months for the, for the parents and the teachers to work together with helping their students. That March seventh day, which is Parent Teacher Conference Day, is also a Rutherford County half-day in-service day. And then we have spring break, March the twenty-fifth through the twenty-ninth, which is a Monday through Friday, which matches Rutherford County's spring break. In April, we do have April the nineteenth, which is Good Friday, and it is a day out for all. It's a day out for Rutherford County. I think if we were in school that day, we would probably see quite a bit of absences because we do have people that travel over that weekend. And then finally, our last full day for teachers and students is May the twenty-fourth. There is an additional day of administrative day required for our teachers, but frankly, the reason that I'm listing it this year and have it in the past is because I want there to be understanding, yes, our teachers are getting in that fifth administrative day, but that will be at principal discretion, and what that will look like probably is teachers getting prepared to end the school year, finishing up everything after school, and so that will give them credit for that. In the past, that's the way we've worked it, but we've listed the day as after Memorial Day. I'm not doing that this year. And so I'll just have a discussion with the state. If the state says we can't do it that way, then we'll just list it the way we've always listed it. But that, that's what you have. So you have the five in-service days, plus we have three stockpile days, and then we have your administrative days. The days that we are out, again, are typically holidays, or they're going to be your fall and spring break, but we do have three days that are in-service days that, that match when Rutherford County is out. So that, that's the way the calendar is, is constructed.
All right. Ms. Settles?
May I say that if we are able to get the instruction in, our test scores, our, everything about the district is showing that we are meeting and exceeding our goals. If we're able to do that in the timeframe allotted, you know, I don't see a need to add any more days to a calendar that, that seems to be well thought out, especially when you, when we're juggling matching with Rutherford County. Davidson County Metro is all together. We've got to juggle, and it's, when you were talking about all you have to go through, my head started spinning just to get it matched up enough, because we do have to consider that parents have more than one child, and that's got a, it's a, a lot goes into it, so I appreciate the effort. And I say if we can get it done in a hundred and eighty days like it is with everything that's required, I think it's a good calendar.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Renier?
I think part of this calendar reflects the fact that years ago, we had the dual calendars. Were you here in Murfreesboro at that time, Mr. Ballard?
Well, I may have been, but I don't remember a dual calendar.
How many years ago was that?
We, we still have...
Brad was in the sixth grade, and he's thirty-two.
We have a dual calendar.
It's switched seven years ago.
It was more than ten years.
Seven years ago.
It switched seven years ago, right when I came on.
Okay.
Because it's, I always did the traditional calendar. We had two different, oops, committees, and I think at that point in time, when we went to one calendar, and Dr. Gilbert was coming on at that, around that time, and that's what we decided upon, and I think because so many parents with the alternative calendar liked the fact that they got fall break, and that's kind of when we worked fall break into the calendar. And I think the big thing, I'm sorry, my mouth is sticky. I think the main thing that you have to look at, as Mr. Settles said, the one hundred and eighty days, that's what, by state law, we have to have with students, a hundred and eighty days. The fact that we added in the parent conference days, we asked for that from MEA for years and years and years, and we're so thankful Dr. Gilbert has come in and made lots of very productive changes and added that in. It's so much easier for pa, for the teachers to do those conferences when they're in a normal rhythm. You know, this is, okay, it's Wednesday, it's Parent Conference Day. We had it spread over a two-week period. There were people staying late consecutive evenings, then you're worried that nobody else is in the building. We have to worry about assistant principals and principals trying to cover that time. So this, these are all things that kind of melded themselves into this calendar, and I think she's done a great job. Some of the days like Good Friday, isn't that considered a vacation day or a holiday? I don't remember which.
I don't remember, Nancy.
It's one or the other, but...
We, we have to have the vacation days in there, but...
Yeah.
I, I just know that if we tried to go to school on that particular day, it, it would be tough.
It wouldn't.
The other thing that's happened is with the accountability. I don't, I was trying to think if there's a school district that has now the alternative calendar, that, that is called a year-round, and there are different year-round calendars, but really, most typical one is what's called a single-track calendar. It's nine weeks on and three weeks off. But with the testing, it makes it really hard because you, you have to have those days in before...
Before that test.
Before they test.
Please, you think you have, Ms. Smith?
So I, the only thing, I mean, the only thing I really still have the problem with is that in November, you have kids off on a Thursday, and then they're off on a Tuesday, right after that. It's, that, that is challenging for anybody. So is there a way to, I, I think that this is a good year to transition the Parent Teacher Conference into Election Day because you can vote anywhere. Is that right?
That would only be true in Rutherford County. For those teachers that we have in our system who do not live in Rutherford County, that may not be an option for them, and I think that's, I don't know how many of those we have, but I would think...
We have a whole lot. I, I've forgotten how many schools we have that are, Lisa, do you remember how many schools are voting?
I think it was six.
There still are. The, the, again, and I, and I'm, I'm sorry. My concern is you're going to have people come in in the building, voting, and you're going to have children also come in the building. I, I think the security is...
An issue with that.
I, I'll be happy to look at that, but I think security, I, I, I would be concerned. I'll just, I would be concerned about security.
Okay.
As I recall, the Election Commission asked us not to have school several years ago.
Right, yes.
Well, I wouldn't say have school. There's a whole difference in the number of, the amount of flow with parent-teacher conference.
Right.
I mean, it's not, it's not a big number of people going into the school. I mean, the teachers would be there, of course, which is, I mean, we are worried about teacher safety, but the kids and the parent, you know, and, and where I have voted, you don't, you just go to the gym.
Mm-hmm.
So...
Pretty normal.
Right, you go to the gym for voting. You have no access to the front door unless you are going, I mean, you know, if, unless you're going to the classrooms.
From, depending on the school and the facility and the way the building is set up, would depend on whether or not a voter had access to any other part of the building other than the gymnasium.
Right.
Okay, so if, if that's the case, but in, in today's world...
Chains or something on the doors.
In today's world, well, you can't put chains on the doors.
On those that go into the building?
No, no, you cannot. That's a violation of your safety. You do that, and you're really up a creek without a paddle and holes in the canoe as well.
But you see what I mean? Like that Thursday, we're off, and then that Tuesday, we're off.
Yeah.
Well...
According to the Election Commission, three of our schools are listed, unless I'm misreading this. Mitchell, that's the primary, Casey Lane Academy and Hobgood.
Used to be John Pitter.
Armistice.
Because that was my, that's why I used to go.
Yeah, I used to go to Armistice to vote. But I did, I remember when I first got on the board, and we were at Reeves Rogers, and it was the first day of school and an election day, and it was a zoo.
Horrendous.
And that's putting it nicely, because there were people coming in to vote. They didn't know where to park because they don't go to Reeves Rogers, except for once every four years, and it was the first day of school, new kids, and it was a madhouse.
And I...
And I understand, I understand the safety, but I'm thinking, it just, just because there's so much going and coming, to, to not have, I understand the point.
But this isn't school.
True.
This is parent-teacher conference.
Teacher conferences.
I mean, the flow for a parent-teacher conference is really...
Is much different than a normal school does.
It is very different.
I'm with you. I'm with you on that.
Well, it...
But as far as not having school during an election day, yeah.
Oh, no, no. I mean, I get that. I get, I mean, not full classrooms. I mean...
Well, I think, and I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
But I also understand that we have had shootings in schools where the person, the shooter actually was after a teacher.
Mm-hmm.
Or an employee, and I'm not too sure that wasn't part of the case today in Kentucky, with this fifteen-year-old young man. So, you know, we, we could, we could, we could start school after Labor Day and go to the end of June, you know? We could do that. But as, as long as we're going to have all of the holidays...
Yes.
Every month, January, February, March, April, you know, when you're going to have school out those days, somewhere you've either got to add it at the beginning of the school year or at the end of the school year. Can you imagine what would happen if we said we weren't going to get out of school till the middle of June?
Yes, I can imagine.
Well, and it would be a matter of taking away fall break for sure.
Absolutely.
Well, you could take away fall break. You could take away spring break. You could take away one day at Thanksgiving, you know, and you could go after Labor Day and get out by the middle of May, probably. But that's not the way our society is looking at schools and the openings today and the holidays. Mr. Barrett?
I, I like them separated, and I appreciate all the concerns Ms. Smith brought up, but if I'm concerned if we combine them on the, both the same day, we lose the focus of Parent Teacher Conference, and you combine it with Election Day, you're just going to, the focus on the kids and the parents and the teachers are just going to be lost on Election Day. So I'm in favor of leaving it the way it is.
All right, Ms. Will.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the calendar as is?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Barrett, second by Mr. Settles. Roll call vote, please, ma'am.
Wesley Dowler?
Aye.
Jared Bird?
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Bill Keane?
Aye.
Nate's Renier?
Aye.
David Settle?
Aye.
Collier Simeon?
Aye.
All right, we have six, six guesses and...
All right. Motion passes. Calendar is adopted. Now, I would suggest and recommend, when things like this come up, and Collier gets questions, and Nancy gets questions, some of the rest of us don't get those questions. I would suggest that these folks that y'all, that whoever has got a concern, if they would call or contact seven board members, so that we all could hear of the concerns, rather than depending on what is doing. Nothing wrong with y'all hearing, don't, don't get me wrong, but I would like to hear from some of these folks as well.
I've told some of them to do that.
All right. Reports and information?
Mr. Barrett with the legislative update?
Yeah. I just wanted to give a quick update on where things stand, since we did pass a resolution on vouchers. That's been taken off notice, which means it's not going to come up this year, which is fantastic news. I think that's great, and speaks well to us and our advocacy for that, and other boards across the state, so thank you all for what you're doing, who you're, who you're calling. So, and I've been told it's not coming back, but TSBA said they're going to keep an eye on it, so if it does come back, we'll definitely let you all know. There's a couple other things too, but... There's a couple of other things too, but the two biggest ones I saw were the funding of school nurses that we talked about. That bill is moving forward, and that's going to change the ratio from 3,000 to 1 to 751 in the BEP formula. So that would mean more money for our district, for all school districts, for their nurses, which we could definitely use. And right now, there's also a bill for funding for RTI-2 positions. Right now, we fund them out of our own budget. The state gives us no money for that out of BEP. There's a bill to change that. It would only fund three positions. I know how many we got?
We have one, at least one in every, well, except for one school, we'll have two, in some cases, three.
So thirteen, minimum, like we have fourteen, you know, we have a lot of them. And so this would only just be a drop in the bucket if the state did give us funding for three. But it'd be something. So that's one thing to keep an eye on, contact our legislators about that as well. And then there's also this one district data verification. It has something to do with testing, but it requires the Tennessee Department of Ed process that provides LEAs, which is our school boards, at least 15 days to verify and correct assessment accountability data prior to data's release. That goes back to the issues they had with the tests. You know, some of the, some of the schools had, some of the tests were wrong. So this is going to help, I guess this bill's helping to rectify that. So I know I've mentioned, you know, we've usually had resolutions in the past of opposition. It'd be nice to have some maybe support. So maybe keep that in mind for our next one. If we wanted to maybe support the nurses in the RTI squared program, maybe next, our next board meeting, we could have a resolution to offer to our...
I don't like being passed out.
I do too, for once. I know, usually we come up here like, no, 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 but I want to say yes, that's support. So keep that in mind. If y'all are for that, we can definitely, maybe Dr. Gilbert or somebody could pull together a resolution.
Did you see some information from TSBA on different resolutions where they provided sample resolutions?
I think they have one for both of these.
I know they have one for nurses, because I did run a copy of that.
I guarantee they probably got one for RTI too. So we can look into that.
We might want to look into that and perhaps next month, give a... Come up with a resolution in support of such.
I think it'd be a great idea.
I think it would be too.
And then the other thing is too, TSBA Day on the Hill, I'm planning on going. I know I haven't registered yet, but I'm planning on, I've just been waiting on work. But I don't know who all plans on going.
That's one thing I asked about, or asked Mr. Campbell to think about, because it's a different format now.
They're having a, they're not going to invite the legislators this year. I don't know why they changed that, but it's just, it's just going to be board members Monday night, and they're going to do some programs or advocacy. And then Tuesday morning, more advocacy, more training. And then they encourage a lot of the board members to go to, I think it's the House Education Committee, all of us to go and to see that and see it in action. So, and then of course, go see your legislators at their offices.
And that is February 12th and 13th.
Yes, yes, it is, up in Nashville.
Ms. Van Cleese, when do we need to...
I think the deadline register is Monday, the 29th.
I think you're right. So think about it and get with Lisa.
Like to attend, get in touch with Lisa and let her know so she can get you registered.
And then, that was it for me, but TSBA has a lot of different things that they're really making an effort to try to, you know, get advocacy out there to make it easier for you to track these things. I know Ben Torres does a really good job of informing us. You know, he sends out those, if you're not getting them, let him know, and he can send them to you, the weekly email that breaks it all down for you. And there's links in there, tracking bills, like there's a link there that says, "TSBA Bills Opposed, TSB Bills Supported." So you can just see the laundry list of bills. A lot of them never get anywhere, but then some get legs, you know? There's always that surprise thing that...
They catch up.
Exactly, exactly. So we're just keeping on the lookout. Right now, it's too early yet, but...
And they have updated their, what do I want to call it, their webpage?
Oh, their webpage, their app. They've been, like I said, they've been really investing in that stuff, so I appreciate that.
And in regards to that, I think we probably have a pretty important election coming up on Thursday, particularly with, in the Republican primary between Shane Reeves and Joe Carr, because one of them will face Kayle Jordan in March for Jim Tracy's seat. And the way I understand it, the election in March is one day, and the next day, whoever is elected in March should report to the Hill.
Got to go to work.
Called Work Starts, so...
Okay.
You might want to keep an eye on that. If you have any ideas, and if you live in that district or not, you might contact, whatever.
And of course, if you have anything throughout the course of these next, please get with me or talk to me. I can help you with any bills that come up or any, anything like that.
Ms. Rinear?
There's one thing. I think this evening at 8:00, the gubernatorial candidates are supposed to be discussing education.
I think it started, I think it's already started.
I set my machine to record it. At first, I saw only the tail end, and I thought they were discussing education, that the governor now, Haslam, was discussing education. And I wrote, "Dr. Gilbert," and then I realized I missed part of that. It's the new candidates.
And we actually have two people there, Dr. Tammy Garrett and Sherry Arnett are both representing us.
Good.
I think that started at 7:00, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
All right, anything else on legislative update? Questions for Jared or concerns? Thank you, Jared, very much for keeping us updated on that. You've done a wonderful job with that.
Thanks.
And it is very important, I think, as we all understand. All right, Ms. King?
I'm just going to say about what Jared was saying. If I'm right, the numbers, we might have 11 nurses paid for under the new, if my math is right. Plus, I think Representative Brian Terry may have something in the works about attracting and retaining teachers as well. I haven't read any details about that, but that's promising.
Senator, thanks.
Something to support.
Exactly.
Let me add that to my list.
All right, personnel report?
You have the personnel report before you. If you have any questions, please see Mr. Ringstaff.
Ms. Smith?
So, but we've had a number of licensed hires hired, classroom teachers.
Yes, ma'am. We had a few teachers leave at winter break, and we hired to replace those teachers.
It wasn't growth. It was just replacement. Okay, okay, thank you.
Would some of those be interims, Ralph, too?
Yes, ma'am, most of them.
We have quite a few teachers that are expecting children.
Better what?
Expecting children.
Oh, okay.
We have people producing future Murfreesboro City Schools. Quite a few of them. A lot. A lot.
So it's the water fountain?
And then your next report is the revenue and expenditure. And Mr. Anderson has been sick, so talk, but don't breathe on anybody. No, I just blew that off. Sorry. There wasn't a right out the door. Whatever one it was.
Happy School Board Appreciation Week. And to you too.
Yeah, to you too, yeah.
We're at the 50% time of the year on this report. The, on the net income, we're down $1,968,000. We don't get out of the red until another month or two, so that's not a big concern. We are down more than we usually are at this time, though. And that, I think, is a function of our growth. When I look at our revenue and our expenditure pages, look at our revenue page. We're at 40.6%, same exact as we had last year on our revenue. Unfortunately, when the state does their growth money and growth numbers, they don't tell us about it until the very end of January, the 1st of February. So we're anxiously awaiting, based on the new information the state released about how they're doing growth money this year, we should be a recipient of growth money. So I'm looking forward to that. That should help us in that regard.
That's great news, Mr. Anderson.
Yes. Excuse me?
That's great news.
That is. That's excellent news. I wasn't sick over there. We are, sales taxes up $148,706, and property taxes are up over $30,000. On our expense side, we are 0.4% higher than we were last year. We're at 42.1. And obviously, being at 42 is, you know, we want to be in the 40s. So we don't want to be much higher than that. And so that bodes well for us. And again, I think a lot of it is because we've had to add staff and stuff based on our growth numbers that we've, are dealing with at this time. So that's where we are right now. Any questions about it?
Any questions on the financial report? Anything to come up under other business?
Don't forget the education partnership. That's Friday night at Country Club, correct?
No, at MTSU.
At the new student union building. Yes, changing, a little Motigrade theme honoring Max and Mary Moff and Reeves Rogers. Looking forward to, ought to be a big time.
You'll be celebrating another party at the Country Club.
It's one?
You'll be busting another party at the Country Club.
All right, anything else to come before the board? Mr. King?
Just a couple of weeks ago, I heard a talk about traffic going to Nashville. It was a mass transit talk. But what stood out to me was they're projecting that the population in Rutherford County and Murfreesboro will double by the year 2040.
Yes.
And when you think about that, if we've got, that's 22 years. And if we've got 130,000 people in town, that's going to be 260,000, over a quarter of a million. And we'll assume we've got 8,500 kids. So you mean to tell me in 22 years, we'll have 17,000 students? And where are we going to put them in 22 years? Seven, you know, eight, another 8,000 people, students. And if you think about it, my math might be wrong, but I'm off a year or two, forgive me. But somebody who is born this year, when they finish college, will be 2040. They'll be 22 years old. It'll fly by. My daughter just turned 20, and it feels like she was at Black Fox seven or eight years ago. It'll fly by. So just food for thought is, we look to the future, it'll be here before you know it.
Absolutely.
Very true.
Something you said that made me think of something.
All right, anything else to come before this board?
Oh, I know.
Yes, ma'am?
Have you already had your conversation with Mr., who was it, Crumley?
Yeah.
Have it, have it next Monday.
Good luck.
Heavy persuasion, very heavy.
Well, we just have to have a school.
Yeah.
That's just all this.
Heavy persuasion.
What do I have, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. Have a second? All in favor? Good night.
Good night.